For the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one change on the agenda under discussion. Strategic planning update is going to be moved to the next meeting. Do we have any other changes for the agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second. Memorial, second to her. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have no absences tonight. We have Celtic Festival Committee update. Are you? Yep. Great.
Good evening, Ms. Simonds. We wanted to come tonight just to give you a little bit of an update. We've been very busy at the end of the past calendar year and so far into this calendar year, putting together the plans for this year's 2012 Celtic Festival. I've entitled this a little bit here, just very short tonight, but it's not your mother's old festival anymore. We've got a few changes that we're putting forward, some things that I think will be new and improved, and certainly we'll address some of the questions, concerns of the festival from years past. The very first thing I'd like to talk about is, as I put in here, better linkage between the festival and the residents of Saline. This has been a question or a comment through the past several years, and it certainly has not fallen on deaf ears for the current executive committee. We've put together two plans for the time being. One, the first one, is that we do want to recognize to the residents and citizens of Saline that they do deserve a break in terms of the cost to enter the festival and to be a part of the festival itself, and we intend on mailing out discount coupons with the water bills to the residents shortly before this particular year's festival. That way, we're sure that they can see that, they can use it, and then it'll be at their discretion as to utilizing those coupons to come to it, but we'll certainly give them a break in the price on the cost to the festival itself. Secondly, one of the things that this great city's put together in the past is a summer music series. This is a series of bands that plays on the Thursday nights through, starting, I believe, around the first of June, right after the Memorial Day holiday, and goes through, right up until Summer Fest. This year, I've been working with Art Trap to have the Thursday night prior to the Celtic Festival for us to bring a Celtic band downtown and actually use that as part of the summer music series, so that we have a band that replicates the music and the attitude and the enthusiasm of the festival itself, get that going on Thursday night. Hopefully, we can get some of the entertainers that come out for the festival on Saturday to come out and play around on the streets and do their thing in between the sets of music. We intend to have handouts for the people who show up for that night, the summer music series. We can sell tickets, but generally make it a good PR and awareness, but give a little bit of the Celtic enthusiasm to the people that come out for the summer music series. Secondly, we wanted to look at a redesign of the festival layout in the park. One of the comments that we heard last year, as people, and we did some surveys, is that you could basically walk through the doors of the park, walk in, and almost be blindfolded. You'd always notice the tents on the left, the wee folks here on the right, this is a little bit further down, and so we wanted to shake things up a little bit and do a little bit of a changeover where things are designed within the park. The first one, and one that people probably noticed the first and foremost, is the red dragon tent, where the music and where the beverages are put together. And we're going to move that further into the tent, into the park itself. And in fact, if you visualize a little bit, and I apologize, I've tried to get a map tonight for you, but we're going to move it a little bit further into the park itself, past the swale, past the trees, more toward where the Highland Games or the athletics have been in the past. So you'll have to move into the park a little bit more, go past some of the activities, the food, the merchants, to get to the actual music tent itself. So we hope that that will take the attendees and spread them around the park a little bit more. We also are going to move the jousters up to the front of the park. So one of the things that you see when you first enter the park is a bunch of horses going back and forth and stabbing each other with the jousting activities. So that'll get everything going pretty nice right off the start. The other thing that we'd like to do is to approach a broader access to beverage, and I do speak here primarily of alcoholic beverages, broader access in terms of the purchasing of that and being a part of the entire grounds of the park itself or in the parks that we're, in the portions we're laying out. This will all be subject to the Liquor Commission approvals and certainly Saline Police Department approvals. I've met with the liquor commission already regarding what we're trying to do there. They've been very receptive to it, very informative as to the things that we can and can't do. We certainly don't want to set up an environment that will create any kind of ill behavior, but we do think that if done in an appropriate manner, that it can be, make it actually a better situation for everyone, that it will actually increase our revenue possibilities there, to be able to walk around with a beverage, but still being in a contained environment subject to the Liquor Commission and the Police Department approvals. And we'll be going back to that at a later date for those approvals. One thing that I think either in the last time or the time before that I was before you, we talked about the increased control of expenses, and we're continuing to try to do that. I have up here that we issued an RFP for tent rentals. We did this actually last year, where we put it into a competitive bid, and that very much kept our cost controls intact there. This year, we're doing the same thing for the sound system that we have, and we've continued on with other areas there where we are looking for better cost controls within the overall budget, make sure that we pay attention to that. And we are looking for more cost-effective insurance coverage for our merchants. Many of our merchants were not able to participate last year because of the extra burden of insurance that they have to take on for liability. Basically, the cost of their individualized insurance costs more than the money that they would make in a given day. So we've been exploring some options to that. I met with insurance peoples, in fact, today, and we came up with a couple of different options that we might be able to effectively utilize this to increase our merchants. This tallies probably close to $3,000 to $4,000 in extra revenue that we could get from the merchants that were not able to come last year, they basically canceled because of that increased insurance. Councilman Gurbek, I think you asked our last particular one about the possibility of insurance on bad weather, and I did check into that. It's got to be one of the most complicated equations you've ever seen in your life in terms of how they do that, because it's measured by the total rainfall in millimeters as put forward by the National Weather Bureau and so forth and so on. It can be done. It is expensive. It really depends on how much rain you're willing to tolerate, how much coverage you want to have, but one thing that is very concerning about it is that once you hit that level of rain, whatever it may be, you're done. You've got to shut it down, you're not able, just able to keep going, and then kind of mix and match your insurance and blend those people that do come to the festival. So if you get insurance for, you know, one to two millimeters of rain during the course of the day, as soon as you hit that, if there was a major downpour, downpour, and you hit that, and it gets to that certain level, you have to shut things down at that point. So it's a very complicated insurance. It doesn't mean we might, still might not look into it, but it's not just a simple equation in that sense.
Okay.
The last one I would like to bring up is that we all felt that within the executive committee, we wanted to go forward with this year's, on the Saturday night, a headliner performance. In the past several years, we have not been able to maintain the level of attendees in the tent into the evening, and that's hurt us financially. We've done very well on the Friday night. In fact, on Friday night's performances on the Pub in the Park has increased considerably. During the days, we get good crowds, but then as the time goes on, and part of that may be the weather, it was bloody hot out there last year, and people wanted to go home, but it would be nice to have some kind of attraction to keep people there into the evening and certainly maintain the activities going on. And we decided to go forward with a headliner performance. We kicked around a number of different bands, and there's many out there that certainly would fit that bill, and we said, well, why not shoot high? Let's go for what we can get and the best one we can get. And we've identified a band called Gaelic Storm. Gaelic Storm, by many, many measurements, is the number one Gaelic Celtic band in the United States. They are very, very well recognized. They're on tour right now. They have performed internationally, all over the world, and are recognized. They have over 60,000 people on their Facebook page, as, you know, for those that have, treat that as a good measurement these days, but they, without a doubt, are a headliner for us. We feel like that just their name and their attraction will bring extra people to the festival itself, not just during the day, but certainly when we see them at night, to bring them in for their performance. They were the number one headliner band last year for the Dublin Irish Festival out of Dublin, Ohio, and they played in various areas around this area. They're playing actually February 20th at the Arc in downtown Ann Arbor, if any of you are interested in going to see them. But we knew that we could not have them as a headliner without getting additional financial support. We got very good support from our local people last year in terms of fundraising, but we felt like that that was needed to really maintain the level of expenditures and revenues against the festival itself, and we did not want to tap into the local fundraising to support the need for the headliner. So therefore, we went out and started knocking on doors to try to get a little bit more corporate financial support to offset this expense. We wanted to treat the headliner as basically budget neutral, that if we could get the money to pay for the headliner itself from this corporate financial support, then we felt like then we could go forward with it, but we did not want to make that as a line item in the budget that is set forth. And I'm pleased to say that we look like we've got that at this point. I learned today that the three names that you see on your list there, Verizon, Guinness, and Holiday Inn, two of those three have committed to support us financially in quite substantial fashion. Verizon, I will hear within the next two weeks, but they've kind of given me the head nod that we will, they'll fill in the remaining numbers that I have. So the exact amount of money that we need, the support that we need for Gaelic support in terms of their hotel rooms being paid for, the money that we need to pay for them to come into here, that will all be paid by corporate financial support to offset their expense without touching our individualized budget for the festival itself. So I think we're off to a good design right now. We've got, as you see, it's a couple of different changes, I think all for the good. Again, let's just, you know, even without the insurance, with or without the insurance, let's just hope for sunshine and go forward from there. Is there any questions, comments?
Mr. Rose.
I'd just like to compliment Mr. Rasch and the rest of his staff there for your efforts to continue to streamline the Celtic Festival and keep it alive and vibrant for the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good work. There are treasurers there too also. Thank you, guys. I know you're working really hard. Thanks. Any further comments, questions? Mr. Roth.
I just want to mention that I'm glad to see some discounts given to the city residents that it was done in the past and glad to brought that back.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do we have Planning Commission annual report?
I was going to sit down and do it, but I don't see the mic up here, so I'll do it from here. This is the annual report for the Saline Planning Commission for the year 2011. We gave a PowerPoint last year, so this is the second time that we've attempted this. Oops. Okay. Apparently doesn't want to do what I want to do. Hmm. Didn't do this downstairs. Okay. The chairperson for the Planning Commission is Scott Lem. He chaired in 2011, and he was reelected for 2012. Vice Chairman Stuart Davis, same time period, served last year and will serve during this year. The other members are the Mayor Grichandriscoll, Richard Neareen, council representative, was Glenn Law last year. Brian Morrow took over later in 2011 and will serve through 2012. Other members are Cheryl Heff, Walt Byers, and Bill Beardsley. Staff member on the Planning Commission was Jack Seal. He retired, and he was replaced by Catherine Skoll, and she will serve also for the entire 2012 year. Jackie Lindemore has been secretary for at least 20 years and retires April 12th, or April 20th, excuse me. The current FY12 budget is shown there, and the proposed FY13 budget, which will be acted on by the City Council probably in May, is the same as last year. We look to have maybe a medium year like last year, as you can tell by the rest of the slides on the work activities. One of the largest projects acted on by the Planning Commission was a site plan addition at Lieber at 1465 Woodland Drive. General contractors Rand Construction, who has provided many good projects in our industrial facilities. The current addition is Phase Three of a long-term plan, actually the final phase of the current long-term plan, and it's 33,000 square feet. The two photos show what it looked like in the fall of this year and the current status of the building shell. I believe they have block up now. Molded Materials is located at 1755 Woodland Drive. The site plan amendment was approved for the addition of two silos. The slide on the left shows three silos that were located in another Midwest state. Two of the silos were purchased and relocated to Saline, as shown on the slide on the right, and it's used for storage of plastic pellets for product construction. Number of site plans were extended because they did not start construction, and one was Electropop at 1200 Woodland Drive. Second one was Clean Getaway Car Wash at 121 Sage Court, and of course, the Banks of Saline project, which is a perennial holdover due to environmental and other issues, is located on 232 South Monroe Street. Another project approved was a site plan amendment for the Evangelica Homes of Michigan, which was done in conjunction with the Saline Hospital. EVH is converting about a 22,000 square foot portion of the hospital that was vacated that was inpatient care, and it will be changed to become a senior rehabilitation center. So the 22,000 represents the indoor portion of the project, I think up to 215 beds, and the slide shown there is a uniquely landscaped rehabilitation walkway. As you can see, it makes a number of bends and turns, and so for people needing walking rehabilitation or something similar to that, they would use the exterior garden. Other site plan amendments included torrid condominiums. They came with a second amendment to their landscape plan along Austin Road to plant some deciduous trees. Prior plan had some evergreen trees. The landscape plan on East Michigan Avenue at ACH facility was reapproved because the original landscape plan didn't work, so they performed re-landscaping with a site plan amendment, and you can see the plants out there now. They have burlap wrapped around most of the evergreen trees, and this site plan should work much better than the prior site plan, which was continually washed out or otherwise flooded out by the flow from the parking lot because it was on the north side of the ditch instead of the south side. We had one special land use review, and that was retail space at 1400 East Michigan Avenue. That's the building owned by Storage Pros that has several tenant spaces, and the new business was a fishing, tackle, lure, and supply business called Your Barber's Up or Your Barber's Down, one or the other. We had one sign ordinance exemption, and that was for the Celtic Committee, who gave a very fine presentation earlier, and two signs were constructed and displayed, and one on East Michigan Avenue, one on West Michigan Avenue, and it was a sponsor board, basically, and it drew some probably good recognition for the Celtic Festival. We anticipate they will come back to the Planning Commission soon to ask for an exemption for similar situation in 2012. We spent a lot of time working with our consultant planners and other stakeholders on the downtown form base code. It started out as an overlay, grew into almost a full-fledged form base code, and now it's sort of a hybrid mix between standard code and form base code, but it will work as a form base code. And what we've done here is made some, a few major changes in how we determine use and layout in downtown area. There's some expansion of boundaries, as you can see on the drawing, mainly the pink areas, because they were C2, they were going to become D2 zones, and some of the former C1 areas are becoming D1 areas, but they will be enlarged slightly, not a lot, but just a few downtown parcels added to it. Another improvement is the expansion of the different business uses allowed to give more variety, a better mix of uses. Also, uses that are constructed down there with new site plans would be more pedestrian-friendly, benches, landscaping, and appearance, more customer-friendly. And then we'll also perform appearance reviews. Part of that, look at some architectural and some art features that could be incorporated into new site plans. We had a preliminary site plan and special land use action on the BP gas station on the west side of Michigan Avenue at 777 West Michigan, and at the time it was approved back in December, it had a drive-through for Burger King and a little sit-down area for Burger King, but then the franchise agreement sort of fell by the wayside. Subsequently, the special land use hearing was put on hold, and now probably would not be conducted because the owner now has deleted the Burger King and has come in with a final site plan just this past week for just reconstructing the convenience store and the gas station with four pumps. The car washes still will remain off-site or off the site plan. There will be no car wash associated with the new site plan. So this site plan would be replaced by less congested site plan. We established some preliminary goals for 2012, some goals and objectives. One, we would implement the downtown form base code when given the opportunity for new business or businesses that are reconstructed. We would promote green aspects for new developments. Planning Commission would consider elements of healthy living in the form of sidewalks, pathways, and bikeways, and where those can be enhanced. Planning Commission would like to get involved with the regional development plan in some way as that develops through the, I believe, the Saline Sustainability Circle and other programs of a regional nature. And then we were in the process of considering a home business ordinance as a special land use, and this would be like a Phase Two of the Home Occupation Ordinance, but it would encourage more entrepreneurship at the household level and some new opportunities for our citizens to start businesses. So that's the short presentation of the major activities of the Planning Commission, so if you have questions or any comments, I'd be happy to answer those.
Council, any questions? Mr. Roth.
I was wondering how this is going to work with the Main Street activities for downtown, and it definitely wasn't mentioned as part of any of your goals. Are you going to let them operate separately, or you're going to work together with them, or how they mesh together?
Well, what I envision is that the Main Street is helping to boost the activity in the downtown area, and if in any way the Main Street program lends some ideas to developers, that will show up on the site plan, and then we'll review it as part of the site plan process.
Any other? Mr. Campbell.
Thank you. I'm just going to add, actually, the form base code actually helps add to the Main Street because they promote historic, the historic nature of a community of a downtown, and so the form base code will help add to that and strengthen the push for the form base code. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Roth.
Thank you.
We have citizens in comment on agenda items. On the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question items that appear on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Good evening. Commissioner George Pearl, 375 Chandler. About the middle of December, I sent the city some suggestions on improvement of the flagpole area of Oakwood Cemetery. I've lived in Saline only 34 years, but I can't recall any upgrades in that particular area. I attended a Ceremony Task Force meeting a few days ago, which was quite beneficial. Taking another look at that area, I would like to make a slight change in my recommendations. The two lights that are intended to shine on the flagpole that are now parallel with the flagpole need to be brought forward a few feet, so the World War I doughboy statue and the flagpole may both be lit properly. The lights need to be equal in brightness and height, as previously mentioned. I have found a very reputable flagpole company that services the tri-state area. I know I'm not the purchasing agent for the city, but a heavy-duty commercial 30-foot baked powdered white flagpole with internal rots was quoted to me at $1,620.50 installed out the door. For a nominal charge, a maintenance contract can be had with four inspections a year with four free flags replacements a year. I'm glad to share any of my info with any of your staff members if need be, and thank you very much for the cooperation.
Thank you.
Mary Hess, and on the cemetery, we have the use of perpetual care funds, and the first part says that the care fund shall be expended only for the following, and then it says to perpetually maintain and care for lots located within the city cemetery, which are covered by the perpetual care contracts. Number two, the remainder of the income, if any, may be used, and the word is may. Years ago, it was shall, in Section Three. The principal of the perpetual care fund may be used for reasonable capital improvements. I'm only saying that in part because of my time. We have apparently close to a million dollars in the cemetery perpetual care fund. I was at the 2011 Task Force. I have been asking concerns of certain things within the cemetery for a couple of years, and let's see, we have a storm sewer apparently collapsing in the cemetery. We have a cemetery wall that appears to be falling apart on Monroe Street, the facade or the cement or facing. The wall in the mausoleum is falling apart. The wood beams along US 12 are starting to cave. Mr. Campbell said that Mr. Fodice, of course, is looking at this and hopes to have some information within the next, I think it was six to 18 months. This isn't the first addition to the cemetery that I've been involved in. This is probably the sixth. This is probably the sixth plan. So my concerns on this one is the first that I've ever had. The concern, of course, is the drainage with the new addition. When the bid was put out, it said excavation and installation of a temporary site access road from the Curtis Park Drive entrance to the expansion area for the purpose of facilitating all construction. That means taking the crypts up there. We have the map, which lays out the proposed crypts, but there is nothing regarding the road that is going from Curtis Park entrance up to the ledge of the hill, which is the side, of course, US 12. There is a big problem and concern with water runoff and the county drain commissioner and it being within the flood plain of the Sleen River. See at the end of the meeting.
Thank you. Is there any other citizen comments?
Hi, my name is Frank Sein. Is it okay if I talk about the Celtic Festival?
Sure.
Okay. A couple of years ago, my family came, and we were excited to come, like as many Sleen events. And one of the biggest things that we saw was the kind of the original Highland Games with the log tossing and such. And we came home, we told our friends about it, and encouraged them to come because it is such a cool event. Now, we came another year later, and there was rugby. It's still a cool sport, but I don't think it captures the, it captures Highland experience quite as much as other games. So I like to support possibly bringing some of those athletes back to compete again. I don't know the financial stuff about it, but I think it would encourage people to stick around and also encourage more people to come possibly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there any other citizen comments? That will move on the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion at the request of any citizen or council member. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion. We have changes to the consent agenda. We have a motion to approve the items as submitted.
So moved as submitted.
Rose.
Second.
Second, Roth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries under unfinished business, item 1213. This would be a report from the cemetery task force. We need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the February 1st, 2012 report from the cemetery task force and file.
Moved.
Second.
Gira, second to Har. Mr. Rubel, would you like to comment on the task force findings and maybe address some of the comments that remain under public comment?
The committee did listen and discuss the comments of Mr. Perrault and the suggestions from Mr. Rhodes and optional areas to develop. And we fairly much agreed that we would proceed with the project as is because it would be too costly to void it out. For one thing, it would cost upfront $73,000 in losses, at least. And that wouldn't include staff time and commitment and for a year and a half's worth of work. And then, secondly, the areas proposed by Mr. Rhodes, the previous committee, task force committee, had looked at those, and some of those are thought to be good areas for above-ground columbaria, for cremaine niches, and therefore you would get much more use out of them. Some of the other areas would be appropriate for in-ground, single-lot burials where you didn't put in crypts because you don't have the ability to do economic installation for large numbers, but just small numbers. And so those areas are very useful for the future. And so with that, the committee voted seven to nothing to proceed with that type of an agenda. Future projects like future columbaria and other single-lot graves could be carried out within the next two or three years. We anticipate we would finish the current projects, begin selling niches in the mausoleum, and then begin selling the crypts in divisions 52, 53, and 54 as soon as they're completed in the spring. And then, judged by a year or two of sales, we would know whether or not we had to make or what schedule we would have to follow to make additional expansion. But with the 88 double crypts and single crypts, there's a combination of double and single crypts in the expanded area and 139 niche spaces. So there's service there for five or more years. And then during that time, you probably will recoup a lot of your revenue invested from the perpetual care fund to make it whole again.
Also, if you could comment to some of the other comments that were made, that you would do address in the memo, but because they were brought up in public comment, if you could...
The access road seems to be an issue that it was mentioned in the RFP, so the contractor would include the construction of an access road if it were deemed necessary to complete the project due to other alternate means possible for access other than Michigan Avenue. And so the current contractor does agree that, and did include in his bid, the installation of an access road. So that plan is being developed now and would be part of the soil erosion permit activity.
Is there any? Mr. Morrow.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Mr. Rubel for his memorandum, and I felt compelled to comment as, I guess, sort of the de facto chair of the Oakwood Cemetery Task Force. But as Mr. Rubel indicated, it was the consensus, in fact, the unanimous consensus of the task force to proceed with the project that had already been approved by city council. And that, the project that I'm referring to is the project on the end of Oakwood Cemetery that borders Michigan Avenue, Curtis Park, that will result in 88 additional crypt spaces at Oakwood Cemetery. I would add further that the comments made tonight by our two citizens, many of which have been made in the past and most of which were articulated at our meeting a week ago Monday, are listed on the back of Mr. Rubel's memorandum. They're bulleted, and all of those suggestions will be brought up again and discussed at a subsequent Oakwood Cemetery Task Force meeting. I suspect that we'll be meeting sometime either in the month of March or April. And in addition to reviewing the bulleted items, we also asked for an opinion from our forester, Mr. Bennett, regarding some shrubs adjacent to the cement podium, that's sort of the center point there of Oakwood Cemetery. And we also asked his opinion regarding what appears to be a dying evergreen tree, also in that same vicinity. So we'll be receiving an opinion from him discussing that, and then also discussing the subsequent bullet points on the second page of Mr. Rubel's memo. My final comment would be, and I shared this at last Monday's meeting, was that obviously there are a whole host of systemic problems and issues at Oakwood Cemetery. I'm the first to acknowledge that. But I would add that this council and the Oakwood Cemetery Task Force have done more to address those problems in the past two years than had probably been done in the last 15. So obviously, there are more things that need to be dealt with, that need to be addressed, that need to be talked about, but I think we're making progress in the right direction. Thank you, Mayor.
Is there any questions for Mr. Rubel? Mr. Girba?
Just looking at the report, I'd like, I think what we have similar, we have like a capital improvement project and such. I would like to see a plan laid out like that for the cemetery, in which I think the task force is looking at that. Maybe that is what Jeff Fordice is working on. But I would like to see the priorities, because there are some items on here that will involve some additional costs and such. And before we try to move into another expansion of the cemetery, we should look at putting all those in priorities and figuring out exactly how those can be attributed and completed without necessarily jumping into another big financial outlay and see if we can get some of those things leveled out now, because now's the time to do them when some of our costs are less before we get into a really big expensive inflationary period.
Mr. Rowe.
I just wanted to thank city staff and the members of the cemetery expansion committee for their willingness to reopen the matter and consider some new information that had come to light since the original decision was made. And I look forward to seeing some of those changes, improvements in the future. So, thank you all.
Mr. Roth, if you would comment.
Yes, I'd like to make a comment. I did not vote when they asked for the call of votes, for ayes. I did not reply yea or nay. So I want that clear for the record, being on that cemetery task force. I have still a great concern as far as what it's going to cost, extra cost, to put the wall in along Michigan Avenue. I disagree with the figures that Mr. Rubel provided inflated to be $71,000 in order to change the particular plan and reconsider it. So I just want to make that clear for the record, that my position on it, that I think that the alternative plan may be more environmentally successful and not disturb the earth that's there now. And I'm not too sure of how the life of the wall is going to be and the cost. And I thought it was a good idea to consider council member Rhodes' suggestions. So I just wanted to clarify the record, and I think that I'm just not comfortable where we're at, but I appreciate everybody's effort in the past, the committee's effort in the past, know where we're at. This may be an issue that water's over the dam, and we're chasing the stuff down the stream, and can't catch up with it. So we may have to look at that as a lost item. And I'm sorry that everybody puts so much efforts in it, but I thought there's some great ideas in order to save money and not disturb other earth that's on the hillside.
Mr. Peters.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Roth. I've walked around the cemetery quite a bit this weekend, and I really can't see any other direction to expand except to that northwest direction. We're pretty much hemmed in everywhere else. I just wish that the new expansion didn't involve such a high retaining wall. They do end up being a high maintenance fee after the years, and sometimes they become unsightly. That's a lot of dirt to move. I really don't have any better suggestions other than move that northwest direction. Just wish something different could be done other than that, was it 14-feet-high wall at its highest point? That's pretty high.
Further discussion? Okay, we have a motion to acknowledge receipt and file. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On 11-187 Cemetery Rules and Regulations and Niche Engraving Standards and Fees, this is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the January 20, 2012 memo from City Superintendent Angie Rubel and City Clerk Hill to approve or not approve the rules and regulations for niche engraving standards to be added to the rules and regulations of Oakwood Cemetery and to approve or not approve the engraving fees as submitted.
Move to approve and approve.
Second.
Morrow, second. Peters. Any questions for Mr. Rubel? Okay, we don't have any discussion. Thank you, Mr. Rubel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under New Business, item 1222, Retirement of Deputy Clerk and Reorganization of the Clerk's Department, so be in motion to acknowledge receipt of the January 9, 2012 letter from Jack Glenn Lindemore notifying the city of her intent to retire effective April 21, 2012, after 25 years of service to the city, and to thank Ms. Lindemore for this service with sincere best wishes in her retirement.
So moved.
Second.
So move, Girba. Second, Terhar. Mr. Girba.
I just greatly appreciate all your work that you've done for the city and helped at the elections and everything, and wish you best on your next initiatives.
We're really going to miss you. I think it goes, we all feel, I think I speak for all of council, you brought a lot to the city, and you're going to be greatly missed, so. But we are, I know you have a lot of things on your plate, so. Is there any further discussion on this motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a motion to acknowledge receipt of the January 27, 2012 memo from City Clerk Hill regarding reorganization of the Clerk's Department and appointment of deputy clerk to approve or not approve the appointment of Amy Rutledge to the staff position of deputy city clerk elections coordinator effective April 23, 2012, at an annual salary of $47,350, and to authorize or not authorize mayor, clerk, and city manager to execute the employment contract with Ms. Rutledge as submitted.
Move to approve and authorize.
Second.
Morrow, second. Rhodes, to approve and authorize. Mr. Girba.
I think this is a good move. It's addressing the concerns that we have, and I think it's a good way of efficiently trying to address problems in two areas and be able to provide enough support without incurring additional costs and actually saving us money.
I don't know if somebody, you want to outline what we're doing?
I can, but since it's the Clerk's office.
Would you like to outline what the plan is for the general public?
Sure.
This is a significant impact. This is a very, obviously, being a presidential election year, things are starting in February, and it's going to be a very busy year for this department. So, want to talk about how we, what our plan for moving forward would be? Your plan, Rob?
Sure. Probably, starting last year, we put together a transition plan to discuss when Jackie was going to retire and when I was going to retire, and we really planned on going together. But she's going before me, I plan to stay around for a while. And we began the process of training Amy, who's been with us for almost 15 years, to transition into the position of deputy clerk. Then Jackie made her announcement, and we kind of had to up our plan a little bit. Jackie will be leaving us, and I think she told me 73 days. So she's counting her time. And we've already started the process with Amy. She's going to be attending the Clerk's Institute in March, which is the first year of a three-year process of becoming a certified clerk. Connie is going to come on board with us in about a three-quarter position. We'll have her 28 to 30 hours per week, and then Bob Skow will have her down in his department, continuing on with her secretarial and clerical duties down there. Jackie mainly did the planning commission secretarial work, doing all the public hearing notices and that type of thing. And Amy has more elections experience, so we've changed the job descriptions, and Amy will become not only deputy clerk, but elections coordinator, and assuming most of her election duties that she does now, but in addition, step up and learn my job. And Connie has experience with meetings and recording secretary. She also has experience down in the building department, which we do cover when they need assistance downstairs. And we're going to move her into the planning commission capacity, and she will also learn the elections. So we're going to be busy. Doing that division helps us immensely in that we aren't training Amy to learn planning commission and Connie to do all of elections when we already have someone who's highly trained in elections area. So we think that'll be a smooth transition. I know we have some major projects coming up with planning that Connie's going to jump right into here next week. But I think with the division of the duties and the training that we have proposed, I think we're going to get on board pretty quickly and get our high level of service to the community in our departments. We hope that we can get by without that other 10 hours, but we'll see. That's a plan. We think that we'll have efficiencies and be able to move forward, so. I'm excited that, I'm excited for Jackie. I'm really sad for me and my department, but excited that Amy and Connie are coming on.
It's great.
We're going to have a good team.
We appreciate your thoughtful management of the department.
Thank you.
And we look forward to working with you guys in a further capacity. Mr. Morrow.
I would, thank you, Mayor. I would just add or echo the comments made by my colleague, Mr. Girba, that although it's never easy to lose an exceptional employee like Ms. Lindemore, it's comforting to know that we will be promoting to equally competent employees who I've had the pleasure of working with in the past. So I have no doubt that Ms. Rutledge and Ms. DeHaan will do an outstanding job. And I think it's important to note that we'll be maintaining a high level, a high standard of excellence in our Clerk's Department, and our citizens should know, we have a Clerk's Department that's regionally recognized, and in my opinion, is probably one of the best that I've ever had the opportunity to work with. So, and in addition to all that, it results in a little bit of cost savings.
And in addition to all that, it results in a little bit of cost savings, which is great. So I applaud the clerk for moving this plan, and of course, as the mover, I enthusiastically support the motion. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion? So we have a motion to approve and authorize. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And twelve twenty-three Fee Book Revisions, Annual Review Request, this would be a motion to acknowledge received of January twenty-seventh twenty twelve memo from City Superintendent Engineer Rubel to approve or not approve the proposed fee book changes as submitted to become effective immediately.
Move to approve.
Second.
Rhodes, second Girba? Discussion? Mr. Memorial?
Thank you, Mayor. One quick comment tonight, and I asked the clerk this prior to tonight's meeting. It's probably something that needs to be discussed with our Parks and Rec Director, Ms. Scruggs, and then brought back, or if somebody could just communicate an answer to me, that would be, that would be great. I was approached by a member of the Celine Area Senior Center asking about the rental fee for the pavilion at Curtis Park as well as the rental fee for the pavilion at Milpon Park. And apparently, the cost to rent the pavilion at Curtis Park is more expensive than renting the pavilion at Milpon Park. And that seems to her to be a bit of a paradox because there are more amenities at Milpon Park than there are at Curtis Park. So if someone could look into that and get me an answer, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Any further discussion on this motion? Mr. Har.
Thank you. I just have a question, a background question. I notice in part F, there's a change in the fee book category for bed and breakfast operations, and I'm not aware of any currently in Celine. Do we have a history of?
We have no, we have no licensed bed and breakfasts. We've had several people who have speculated on that over the years, but then when it comes down to actually making an application, they have failed to. But certainly, it is, it would be an attractive business, I think, in some of the older homes if someone were interested into it, so we're just prepared to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Are we limited to annual review of the fees in the fee book, or can they be changed periodically?
No, we, they are changed from time to time as needed. For instance, when we did the transient trade ordinance, we adopted those fees. When we approved the niches, rules, and regulations last December, we had the interment rates and the sales rates in there, and those are fee book rates. If during the year something happens to change the cost of water sewer connections, we do it then. Council can add to it, modify it at any time as the need arises.
The reason I ask that question specifically is to do with the farmers markets because I believe there will be a rate increase there as we continue to move towards setting up to accommodate the bridge cards. Okay.
There further discussion? Mr. Girba?
There's a couple of fees on here that are significantly increased mainly by two-hundred to three-hundred percent, and some going from two-hundred to seven-hundred dollars. Are the individuals that'll be impacted by these large increases gonna be impacted, or do we not have any that apply to these, like the childcare center? That one seems like a big jump.
There are probably eight or nine special land uses in this category, and for some reason, these two, all the rest were adjusted over the years except for these two. So basically, it's a catch-up on these two special land uses. You still have to do the same amount of staff work, public hearings, you know, research and that. And for some reason, these two got missed over the years.
I'm just concerned that we may get a little bit pushed back on the jump so high that we might have, should have phased these in over two years or such, but I know we've gotta cover our costs somehow, so.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to comment that childcare fees will not impact the current ones. These would be new ones coming in. The renewals are significantly less.
Okay. Further discussion on the motion? Okay, so we have a motion to approve the proposed fee changes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Further discussion? We have commission and committee reports from council members. Mr. Rhodes?
Environmental Commission, just a quick report. First, I wanted to welcome our newest member, Bruce Westlake, who will be joining us for our first meeting in another week or so, and we're looking forward to having him onboard. And then, secondly, I wanted to acknowledge that the Heritage Paper has had a nice above-the-fold article. So the city and the city's environmental commission received some good press about our participation with the high school botany class and their efforts to get their greenhouse up and running. And so giving them, having presented them with these rain barrels should help that effort.
Is there any other commission, committee? Mr. Peters?
Yes, just like to address the issue about the Celtic Festival and the athletes that will be back this year. The one year they were absent, it happened to be a scheduling issue where they had to be someplace else the same weekend we had our festival, so they couldn't join us. But that's one of the most popular events down there. People love it. And we always have volunteer positions. If you want to work with the athletes, those are available if you'd like to join us. We'd be glad to have you. They're really a great bunch of guys to work with. But it is a very popular venue. Happy to say they'll be back again this year. And I wanted to thank Bob Rash and Pam Grosshans for coming in tonight and giving us the presentation. There's a lot of talented people, work very hard. Those two folks work all year long on that festival. It doesn't happen by accident. And I think with the music lineup we have this year, we're really gonna knock this one out of the park. So I'm looking forward to a great festival and thanks to all their hard work.
Other commission committee reports?
I will just talk, the Main Street group is going up to Lansing Wednesday afternoon to do our presentation, and there's a big group of people that have worked really hard to have a really awesome presentation, and hopefully we'll be getting the select level for the Main Street program. I know that, I think it was, oh no, it was EDC that last Monday that Cindy presented at. So anyhow, so I know Todd and Cindy and this, everybody, there's a lot of different groups I've been working in. I think it's gonna be a great presentation. I think there's one more meeting tomorrow night for that. Also, the fire board met, and we do have a budget to bring forward for city review, and it's a very nominal increase, but there is a very slight increase. But I think it probably will be able to be accommodated with, well, I don't know. It'll be interesting to see. So anyhow, I think there's, oh, the EDC met and had some presentations from Ann Arbor Spark and Cindy and what else did I forget? One other person.
That one consultant regarding?
Oh, the hotel. Right, the hotel gentleman. So there was a hotel feasibility study that we hired him to do, and he did find that, as I think you all got the letter a few months ago, we asked for a presentation from him that is feasible even possibly with the new hotels depending on, you know, that time. We also shared with him the feeling that it would be most appropriate to move on to the next step, which would be actually crunching the financial statements around the viability of that kind of development in partnership with a future developer or retailer. So basically, the city now has a document. I'm actually going to the redevelopment ready seminar tomorrow in Lansing, and this is sort of an example of being redevelopment ready in that if there is a developer that is interested in looking at that site for reuse, we can document as of today that there is potential development interest in that kind of use, and that just helps move it that much quicker. So I don't think, does anybody else have any commission or committee reports? No? Okay. Are there any reports or other announcements? It's Mr. Memorial.
Yes, at your desk this evening, I have distributed a flyer, and I spoke about this, I believe, about a month ago. I am hosting the first annual Celine Senior Conference at the Celine Senior Center on Friday, the twenty-fourth of this month from ten-thirty to twelve-thirty. It's geared towards anyone in this community regardless of residency from about the age of fifty-five on. And if you have any questions, concerns, or would like to know more about municipal government, county governments, and state government, I encourage you to attend. Our city manager will be presenting along with our city clerk and assessor, and Washtenaw County Commissioner Alicia Ping will be there as well as State Representative Mark Womet. And I was just notified last week that our Washtenaw County Sheriff Jerry Clayton will also be on hand to share some remarks. The event is absolutely free, but an RSVP is required, and the program is, in addition to a complimentary lunch and some door prizes, will be provided. If you would like to RSVP, please actually contact the senior center, don't contact me. And their number is four-two-nine-nine-seven, nine-two-seven-four. And I encourage, if your schedules permit for my colleagues to attend, and I would encourage you to share this flyer with anybody you come in contact with, the more the merrier. So again, I welcome your participation, and if you have any other questions, feel free to contact me directly. Thank you.
Hey, are there any other reports or announcements? Mr. Campbell, you want to talk about the town hall meeting that's coming up?
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Maybe a little update on how our, rest of our internal processes are going for this surge?
Sure. You all may recall that the first steps in this process for replacing, finding a new police chief is developing a candidate profile. And we started actually last week with bringing Terry McGinn coming in and facilitating with the executive team, the department heads, finding out what they believe are the strong and priority characteristics of the next police chief. And we did the same last week as well with the police department personnel. So that both went, I feel, pretty well. Some good discussion and some good comments. And now we'll go to February Wednesday.
Fifteenth.
Wednesday? Right, Wednesday, right. I knew it was the fifteenth, I couldn't remember if it was Wednesday or Thursday. So Wednesday, February fifteenth, seven-thirty PM, right here in city council chambers, we invite all our residents, local businesses to come and let us know what you believe are the important traits, characteristics that you want to see in the new police chief. So, and that was, it's also an opportunity for city councils as well to make their comments known, too. So if you have any questions, please feel free to contact me here at city hall.
Thank you. Any questions regarding that? Okay, and we have no other discussion items, so we'll move on to public comment under the open meeting. So any citizen may come forward at this time, make common questions to the city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary Hess. After twenty-two years on the city council, when you receive a report and file, it's kind of nervous because a lot of times you don't see it again. The amount that we're talking on the cemetery is, what, three-hundred-and-forty-some thousand dollars? And then there is going to be from the general fund, the sidewalk, because that basically doesn't do anything for the residents there, and I would hope the fence and some other A year and a half ago, there was a questionnaire sent out to the public on how do you feel about certain things? And on the cemetery, when it asks, "Support expanding," the red line here that goes to over forty percent, "No," was given to the council. And then it says, "For input on support additional fees or taxes," fees meaning costs, you have a big red "No" here. I still am asking for the repairs again, and I think, Mr. Rubel, as far as my concerns with the road that's going to the cemetery on this particular addition, I still believe there is going to be a problem in the spring. It could be interesting for Memorial Day, and I'm sure we'll put a light on it, and it won't be like the leaking roof on the rec center, and it won't be like the leaking roof at the DBW. It'll be out in front of God and everybody for us to be able to see on our entrance to the city if there's a problem. One more comment. There's eighty-eight Crips. There's also going to be apparently six more Crips for Mr. DeRocet, and he's here. And I was wondering, is that in addition to the eighty-eight Crips, and how is that to be paid?
Hi, I'm Gabby Rundell, and this is Shannon L. Flynn. We are juniors at Celine High School, and we were wondering what you as councilman are looking in for the new police chief, and do you know how long it's going to take for us to get a new police chief in Celine?
We normally don't talk during citizen comments, so it would be great if you could come to the February fifteenth meeting. I will say that we're looking for somebody that has a lot of good experience, and I think we all have personal opinions, which we haven't talked together as a group, and that's the whole purpose of the meeting on the fifteenth. The timeframe is probably three months, probably from the actual posting of the job. Is that reasonable to say, Mr. Campbell?
Our goal is to have someone on
By July one.
By July one, at the latest.
So, but it would be great if you could come and give us your feedback, and I'd be happy to talk to you. But we normally don't, comments are an opportunity for the citizens to tell us what they're thinking about things, but we don't actually have a dialogue around that at this point in time. So, okay, thanks. Any other citizen comments? Okay, we'll move on to the, is there any other business to come before the Celine City Council? Scott, we have our next meeting on February twenty-seventh at seven-thirty, and we have a motion to adjourn at eight-thirty-seven.
So moved.
Girba, second Memorial. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.